Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. For all of us that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. We'll have our opening prayer led by Councilmember Campbell and our pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Neal.
God, we come to you in prayer. We just ask your continued blessings upon this city. Pray that you'll give this body your guidance. And as we approach the Thanksgiving season, we just want it to be a reminder to be a grateful community and a grateful nation. And as we walked in tonight seeing the American flag, we just want to thank you for our freedom and what that means to us. And we just give you all the praise. Jesus name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Neal. Moving on to our citizens' participation. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the citizens' participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing that there is none, go ahead and close citizens' participation. Moving on to the consent agenda, I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number one through four. Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to board commission and committee schedules. Planning and zoning meeting will be December the 2nd, 2024. We have a Board of Adjustment meeting on December the 5th, 2024, a City Council meeting on December the 10th, 2024, and a City Council meeting on January the 7th, 2025. Moving on to old business and tabled items. Item number five, this item is currently tabled from November 5th council meeting. To proceed with any consideration or discussion of this item on the second read, it will need to be taken off the table during tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion and a second to remove Bill Number 24-63 from the table?
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. This item is now back on the agenda as old business and can now be considered for a second read and discussion. I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-63 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving a petition for the creation of a community improvement district, establishing the Farm Road 93 Community Improvement District as a political subdivision of the state of Missouri, and directing the city clerk to notify the Missouri Department of Economic Development of the creation of the district.
Thank you, Laura. And we have an update from our city attorney, Megan, this evening.
That's right, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've learned from the developer that they had an issue with their timeline due to a change in the ownership on the involved property in between the first read and tonight. That will require them to file an amended petition, which we've advised their attorney of the same, and then they will also need to renotice that, republish the notice under the state statute. So we've advised them of those things. They are going to be handling them, but they are not present tonight and they're not going to be prepared to proceed tonight. The item as it stands currently is up with second read. It can be postponed by the body. That would require a motion and a second and an affirmative vote. I would recommend that the motion be for a postpone indefinitely, just due to the uncertainty with the timeline on the developer's end for now.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Do we have any questions from council? And so the recommendation is to postpone this indefinitely?
Yes.
So do I have a motion and a second to postpone Bill 24-63 indefinitely?
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. This item is postponed indefinitely pending further updates from the developer, staff, or the city attorney. Moving on to item number six, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-65 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title VIII Fees, Chapter 805 Fee Schedule, Section 805.050 Buildings and Zoning, Section 805.080 Parks and Recreation Fees, and Section 805.100 Utility Administration of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions or discussions before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-65, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? Now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries 600. Item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-66 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .71 acres of real property located at 213, 217, and 221 North Main Street from a non-designated zoning district to Main Street District MSD.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions or discussions before moving on to final passage? Seeing there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-66, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? Now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number eight, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-67 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .54 acres of real property located at 210 North Walnut Avenue and the 200 block of North Walnut Avenue from medium-density single-family residential R1M and non-designated zoning district to Main Street District MSD.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-67, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? Now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number nine, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-68 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .2 acres of real property located at the 200 block of North Main Street from Local Commercial C1 to Main Street District MSD.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-68, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? We're now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number 10, I now need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-69 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .18 acres of real property located at 204 North Main Street and 103 East Grant Street from Local Commercial C1 to Main Street District MSD.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions or discussion from council before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-69, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? We're now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number 11, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-70 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately .93 acres of real property located at 501 West Brookfield Avenue from General Commercial C2 to multifamily residential R3.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-70, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? We're now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. For item number 12, staff has notified me that they wish to take this item up at a later meeting and to move forward with present -- and to not move forward with presentation this evening. Sorry, it changed on me. So as this item has not yet been approved for discussion on a first read, we will move on to the next agenda item, item number 13. So item number 13, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-72 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title I Government Code, Chapter 120, City Officers and Employees, Article 121, General Provisions, Section 120.025, Mayor and Council Compensation of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic of Missouri.
Thank you, Laura. And we have Mr. Cameron here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So going back to this topic again from last, I believe it was the last election cycle, because the charter had changed, presenting this consideration to the council because we were going to be doing the work sessions and additional work that we have asked, at least in my administration, is to ask for this council to convene. So I asked for the consideration before the -- after the charter changed before election. I understand the feedback that we received at that time because four of you would have automatically received funding and be voting for yourself. So the way this would work, again, I'm presenting it because in this capacity, the filing deadline to run for city council will be after this ordinance. And so basically, how this would work is if any amendment to the ordinance or any changes to help council -- or to provide additional council compensation, what that would mean is there would be four people, four members that would be signing up, be elected, that would fall under the new, and the existing members that still have three years left on their terms, and as well as the mayor's position, would not receive additional compensation until the next municipal election. And again, it's always subject to change. My position is, with all of the different things that I have, that we have added to the city, the work sessions and the things, I know why people do not sign up to do this. They don't sign up to do it for the money necessarily, but at the same time, this is the only window in that capacity that doesn't, is not where someone would be a conflict that's going to be signing up or running for office. And this is the -- this meeting and the meeting the next would be the one before signups. So at least four people would not be subject to, not a conflict for support or against. So I'm bringing it back for consideration for that discussion just because of the timing of it from the standpoint of that it does not run into the same conflict, because that was part of the problem with the last ordinance that we presented, that there was only one chance for two reads and four people could be voting for themselves. That's all for the -- your whole discussion.
And Mr. Cameron, I did have a question for that. You'd mentioned until the next municipal election, did you mean for the next term?
I'm sorry, yeah, it would be the next term. So basically, great, great point. Next time that there would be, well, if there was a municipal election and there was a vacancy, because that's every two years, so there could be potential that if a new member was voted on because someone left or vacated, they would be subject to, they'd still be subject to the new ordinance.
They would get the new rate.
That's right.
So the new rate's going to affect at a new term.
So if someone vacated, now we don't wait the full term for us to do a municipal election to fill that? So if somebody was to vacate?
But that new rate wouldn't take effect until they filled the next term.
Yeah, until the terms.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, yep.
Okay, just for clarification.
So it'd be three years.
Three, three years for the four council seats and the mayor, and then the other three seats would get this compensation starting April or whenever they were elected or reelected or however we go on. So, no, I appreciate that, bringing that to us, Mr. Cameron. Does council have any discussion on this matter? Mr. Neal?
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is important. We hear this a lot, that people don't have time, it doesn't pay well. If you have someone who owns their own business and they get paid by the job that they're doing, to take time out of their day to come to our work sessions, to go to meetings, anything like that, they're losing money. Like, nobody's paying them to be there. And not that you necessarily do this just for the pay, but at least they're not facing that burden. And so if we can remove some roadblocks just to try to open up the doors for a more diverse council and hopefully entice more people to want to do this and at least run for election, I think it would be a good thing. I really like that the fact that part of this provision is it's paid by the meeting. I think it's important that we recognize the importance of being here, because while you do, you know, you can be talking to citizens, you can be going to other things, but if you're not here to cast your vote, that time doesn't really matter. I mean, it matters, but if you're not here to represent the citizens with the vote, then that should be reflected as well. My kind of main question on it is, it says 250 per meeting, 500 per meeting for the mayor, but it's per meeting. And I would just like to make sure we kind of spell out what a meeting is, because we've had a lot of workshops that are taking place in the middle of the day. You know, anybody who's working a normal daytime job is taking time out to be at those meetings and that kind of thing. So that would be my kind of question of, and if we can answer that now or figure it out before the next meeting, of just what classifies as a meeting? Is it something where the city administrator calls us together and that is a meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Any input, more input from council members on anything?
So I really appreciate what you had to say, Mr. Neal, and I was kind of looking back to our old discussion. I had to pull our folder back from the last time. So, yeah, I really appreciate everything you said. One thing that I've really considered and taken into consideration, thought about a lot since the last time in our discussion, was that fact of having it tied to the meeting. As much as I like that for, you know, holding council responsible, I still keep going back to, you know, we took an oath to be here. I understand our vote is important, but when I look at the process up and I write out my schedule of everything I'm doing, even as a council member, that vote was such a small portion of that entire role as council member. So between going out and meeting with constituents, meeting with constituents on the weekend, reviewing the agenda, it was a very lengthy process just to get to the council meeting, which then again was just an hour of that whole process. So just my concern, and I wanted council to make sure that you take into consideration that, just in the fact that life happens. So yesterday, my truck broke down. If this meeting was yesterday, I wouldn't have been able to make it. So then when I'm looking at that and I'm asking someone to do a job or have a responsibility and to do that the entire time, just to say, no, you missed that last meeting, I'm sorry, your truck broke down, your kid got sick, your kid had a game, you know, a lot of different things happened. And so I just really wanted to make sure that council kind of took that into consideration too, that as important as that vote is, I understand if some of us can't be here, things happen. So I don't want that to tie into that compensation, because I feel like we still want to compensate them if something happens. So I know we've had a problem with that in the past with a few different things, but I kind of feel like that was a little bit more isolated. But just to kind of give my own two cents on that portion there, but I really appreciate everything that you had to add in there as well, is this is a difficult job. And so I know as we're up here, the more you do, the more difficult it gets. So it doesn't seem to get any easier, and our schedule gets bigger and bigger. So I appreciate that, and I really appreciate what you had to say on that.
Kind of follow that up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, absolutely.
One thing that I had kind of looked at, and I even spoke with the attorney about, was trying to figure out a way where we could add a compensation for the extra thing. So when a member goes to an OTO meeting or MML training or any of those things, that they're taking more time out of their life for an actual, you know, official event as a way to figure out how we can show compensation for that as well. And just with talking with her, there wasn't a real good way to do that, at least not now.
Mm-hmm.
Again, I've got three years before it would be something that would affect me to where I feel like I'm voting on my own pay raise. And so that's, you know, time to figure that out, since we're cutting it a little close on this.
Sure, yeah.
And that is, that is something I was cognizant of. As you said, you are spending a lot of time out there, and we're just trying to figure out the best way to reflect that.
Mm-hmm. And that's a hard balance too, because it's, each one of us, I know, it's, there's different levels. We each have a different life, we have different perspectives, and so it can be a matter of, I mean, for one of us, it might be one hour, for one of us, it might be four hours. And so, no, I appreciate you looking into that and really taking into consideration all of it, because there's a lot of things we can do for involvement. I would like to do twice as much as I'm doing now, but I can't. And it all goes back to, I have a job, I have bills, I have a family. And we're all up here for four years of our life if we take that full commitment, and in four years, a lot can happen. And so I just appreciate everyone being up here and, you know, having this discussion as compensation, because it just feel like, you know, this is something long overdue for, for council. Does anyone else have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Campbell?
I appreciate what Mr. Cameron is doing here, and I can, and Mr. Neal. But I'm going to say that for 19 years, I volunteered at a very, very, very low rate, less than this, at a time where I was growing a business and a family. So it can be done. Not that everyone's willing to do it, but it can be done if your heart's into it. So I know that some, some may, may, you know, need this or want this for a later date, but I just know that it can be done without increasing pay.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Do we have any other discussion from council?
Just to that, we have a hard enough time finding council members most of the time. So just any kind of incentive that we can give to them, I feel like we need to do something, because it doesn't necessarily apply to most of us, so.
Thank you. Any other additional comments or questions from council? Any discussion? So as we have no more discussion, let's see. Do we have any citizens here this evening to comment on this ordinance? No citizens this evening to comment? That was pretty confident. So one last chance, council, any discussion, comments before we go? Mr. Wilson?
Me and Darren here is Ward Two. If you, if we traveled the whole ward, it takes an hour or more just to go around our ward. So that's an hour every two weeks to a month if we spend traveling. I will comment on compensation.
You said what on compensation?
I will not comment on compensation.
You will not comment on compensation? Thank you, Gary. Any additional questions or comments from city council?
The only other thing that I'll add is, you know, just, just back to Mr. Campbell on, on, you know, the not having that need for compensation. You know, for me, I'm the compensation that we have unless we take it away, that's what I get. So, you know, that increase doesn't really play to me and my own personal life. When I look at this for whoever's going to fill this seat after, and I look at all of the responsibilities that go into this, I'm not comfortable asking someone to do what I'm doing. Even though I find this as an honor, I'm very honored to sit up here, and I see that perspective too. But in asking other people to do this job when I leave, compensation is something that I feel is very important. So I just wanted to make that note. If council has any questions or any discussion before the next meeting, please make sure to get with staff.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Or amendments.
Or amendments. If anyone has any questions, amendment suggestions, or anything that they would like, comments, questions before the next meeting, please get with staff. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 14, 24-R-50, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city to execute a services agreement with OWN Incorporated for Engineering Design Services of Stormwater Improvements to the future Joshua Morris Park site. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-50, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? And we have Ms. Fitzpatrick Duncan here this evening to give us an overview.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Fitzpatrick Duncan, engineer. I have a contract with OWN Engineering for stormwater improvements at the future Joshua Morris Park site. These stormwater improvements are needed due to the proximity of the floodplain to the site and to help relieve some flooding for downstream property owners, particularly along West Logan Street there. The not-to-exceed amount for this contract is $30,000, and staff is recommending approval of this contract.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have any questions from council? And you said it's OWN?
OWN Engineering, yes.
OWN, okay. I said that wrong, so my apologies, OWN. No questions from city council? Thank you, Stephanie. And as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Trying to trick me. Item number 15, 24-5, wait a minute, yeah, okay. 24-51, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city to engage Cook, Flat, and Strobel engineers, PA, for provision of engineering design services on the Commercial Avenue widening project. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-51, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? And we have Ms. Fitzpatrick Duncan here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract is with CFS Engineers for the widening of Commercial Avenue near the new intermediate school. The work will include not only the roadwork, but the associated sidewalk and stormwater improvements that would go with that road improvement. We selected CFS through a formal RFP process, and the not-to-exceed amount of this contract is $80,000. Staff is recommending approval of this contract as well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Have we used this service before, this contract service before?
We have not worked specifically with this engineer before, but they are on our approved on-call list, so we're familiar with their work, and they've done some private projects in the city as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions from council? Okay, seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Moving on to item number 16, 24-R-52, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a license agreement between the city and Lester E. Cox Medical Centers for the operations of Cox Fitness Center in Republic located within the Republic Community Center. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 24-R-52, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second? And we've got Mr. Parks here to give us an overview this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Parks, Parks and Recreation Director.
Chris Parks, Parks and Recreation Director. This agreement is for Cox Fitness Center in Republic to continue their operations within the community center. Cox Fitness has been in that space since 2003, which is when the community center opened. They run a top-notch fitness center that, you know, caters to all ages and they've been great to work with over the, however many, the 20-some, 22 years, 21 years that they've been in there. So the, let's see, the current three-year agreement expires November 30th, '24. The proposed new agreement includes an amount of $119,404.47 for each of the next three years, 2025, '26, and '27. Staff recommends approval. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Do we have any questions, comments from council?
Do you happen to know how many people are associated with that? How many people have membership there?
How many current memberships? I do not, but I could get, I could get you that number.
Okay, well, that's fine. I know it's packed. I know it's a good service for the communities.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Neal?
Mr. Mayor, has anything changed with the lease agreement from the previous three years?
Just the price. So it went up 3% last, the previous three years was $115,926.70. So it was, it went up 3%.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to item number 17, 24 dash R dash 5-3. A resolution of the city council authorizing execution of a grant award agreement with the Federal Highway Administration through the Safe Streets for All Grant Program to complete a 10-year update of the city's ADA transition plan. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24 dash R dash 5-3, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. We have Mr. Sims here this evening to give us an overview.
Thanks for your time. I'm Trenton Sims, the capital planning and funding officer. We were awarded $240,000 from the Federal Highway Administration to up, do a 10-year update of our ADA transition plan. We will be responsible for a 20% match, which will be $60,000. That'll either be cash or any, or an in-kind staff contribution to pay for that. This ADA transition plan will include a comprehensive inventory of the existing facilities that the city owns, as well as the sidewalks, and then a determination of what the estimated cost to make those improvements will be. And then we'll utilize that in the annual capital improvement plan and for the annual budget, budgeting process. Additionally, we'll leverage this plan to apply for grants.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. The first time the city ever did an ADA transition plan was adopted, I believe, in 2015 or 16. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this, this is just an update to that original plan? And so our funding, though, for transportation dollars is, is required for us to actually have the ADA transition plan?
Correct. As part of the bipartisan infrastructure bill, one source of funding was the Safe Streets for, or the Safe Streets for All Act. So to be able to apply for implementation dollars to build the infrastructure, we have to have the safe, the safety action plan in place. So we're applying for those funds so that we have this integrated into that plan, if that answers your question.
It does, but it also, just for, just making a point, not clarification, just statement of fact, thank you for all the money you're out working to secure in grant dollars that we probably need to communicate more. But again, thank you for going out and finding money that we only have to come up with a 20% match. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any questions or discussion from council? I did have a quick question, and this may, you may have already covered this. So I understand the ADA transition plan portion, does this also identify like missing sections of sidewalk and whatnot? That's a part of the?
Correct. We did clarify that with federal, the Federal Highway Administration as a part of our first meeting with them. And the grant agreement specifically states that we will include a sidewalk analysis as a part of that.
Excellent. Do we have any other questions or comments from council? Seeing that there is none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to item number 18, 24 dash R dash 5-4. A resolution of the city council declaring its support for the Springfield Chamber of Commerce's Invest in Strategic Infrastructure Legislative Priority for 2025. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24 dash R dash 5-4, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Mr. Tabor here this evening, Mr. Cameron.
No, it's mine. We're talking about the legislative priority, correct?
He looks surprised.
Yeah, I was gonna say, his face is just a little red. I don't blame you because I'm going, huh? So one thing that has been taking place in the region is there's been a lot more regionalism. And so working with the Springfield Chamber to partner with us on regional priorities and including the MM project in the overall legislative priorities for 2025. Obviously, in this list, we're not asking the council to approve all of what, all the other initiatives that are there, but basically, we are being listed in Springfield's Chamber of Commerce, but we are a member of the Springfield Regional Economic Partnership. But they have specifically designated a section of highway and infrastructure in this legislative priority that I believe from a regional perspective would help for us since we're in it to support that initiative. It's not asking for the whole initiative because not all those would even apply to Republic. The Ozarks Transportation Organization is also listed Republic's MM Highway in their legislative priority. And so basically, having that support whenever the, the chamber is going to Jefferson City as we'll continue to do ourselves, but having the Springfield Chamber backing a project in Republic is huge. It's, it's, I'm glad to see this on the list and the region itself voted to put it on the list. It wasn't just the chamber. It's membership of the chamber that believe in the growth and development of the MM corridor and that the shortage and funding to widen that to five lanes is something that's very critical to the region. And that's why this is before you, because I did not want to put an endorsement of city of any kind on something without your consideration and seeing it out there like I didn't even know we supported that. So I just want to make it very clear what we're supporting is the Invest in Strategic Infrastructure, but it's listed as one of the priorities. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any questions, discussion from council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to item number 19, 24 dash R dash 5-5. A resolution of the city council authorizing the city administrator to engage Crossland Construction Company Incorporated for provision of construction manager at-risk services on the new administration building project and enter into an agreement for such services. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24 dash R dash 5-5, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. And we've got Mr. Ford here.
I'm covering.
Mr. Cameron again. I made it twice.
Yeah, it's okay. I just figured.
I just wanted to say your name.
So thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As we had back several work sessions ago, talking about the transition of the city administration facilities, they have now officially all, but the city attorney transferred to this, to this, or to the Build's building. That was never the intent of that building and I want to do a little back history. In 2016, I think it was, the city purchased land at Oakwood and Farm Road 170. So if you know where those apartments are, the city purchased that land with anticipation of building a brand-new city hall at that corner, plus building the OTC campus. So the, the original bond in early 16 was actually to do both projects at the same time for somewhere around 13.4 million. I believe city hall was six to seven million dollars, was to build a full-fledged city hall. What this is, is what we put in that message or into that discussion, is an extension of this building by 14,500 square feet. Basically, it would relocate, it would recommission pretty much this space and we would be actually building it in, not in addition to the property that's at the build site, it's actually an additional, it's a building just to the north of the existing building. And quite frankly, doing a construction manager at risk, what that does is allows us, by state statute, it allows us to enter into an agreement for a not to exceed amount. What I'm asking for is a not to exceed amount of 5.2 million, and that covers the, the construction manager at risk because they're the ones at risk. They have to come in at their budgeted amount. They have to scale back on the project. It's up to them, but we have to enter into the agreement with them so that they can begin to provide us what those numbers would look like. The other pieces to that is, just as a reminder, that the properties in the downtown, now that they have been rezoned, will also be listed, they'll be appraised and listed as part of the sale, or part of the selling those properties, as well as the Oakwood property to apply to any cost to this, to try to keep this project into some manageable number, but to increase the space, on space, this is it. Because we've remodeled the downtown four times in my eight and a half years. That removed, even remodeled this room into a council chamber. We've redone the utility billing office three times. And so we've gotten to the point where we had people in three or four different buildings. Our city attorney is actually located in this building now in the basement. So it's really from the standpoint of, I hate to say it that way, but from a conducive nature of that, it's one of those projects that's also just been delayed for a long, long time to try to do something with it. And we're in a position to now do something with the property, but we, it was this building, or the, I'm sorry, we're not in the built building, but that building has, if you go into that facility, we've got pretty much everyone into every single space. My staff that's sitting out there know this. And we, the city, the admin side is paying rent because that's not what the bond, that's not, the rates cannot pay for it. Water and sewers would be clear because there's a payment in lieu of tax requirement by the state not to exceed 5%. So the rates are not going up to cover the building. This is completely out of the funds from the general fund and none of it's coming from the public safety fund. So we're asking for your consideration for approval and recommending approval. And I'll answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
So of the, the 4.5 that was earmarked in the budget, you're saying that the, that would be minus the sale of the properties, is that correct?
Yeah, we would, but what I would ask in that is that we would, which is what we've talked about before, was to take the money from the sale of the properties and put them back into the project. And including the property we just rezoned, because I would, I'd almost risk to say that the lift station, I mean, we could even pledge the money at the lift station or the property out at, we just rezoned, that was a lift station, that's got commercial value. So looking for places that, in March, that we will actually go out and possibly sell. One caveat, though, is I haven't notified the downtown historic preservations, that group, Historical Society, and they are interested in, in the purchase of the building. But as, as the city attorney will tell you from the perspective of donating land, there'll have to be some consideration of the appraisal and then what this council would like to do with that building. But that building will have to be as-is because as you recall, you may or may not recall, you didn't ask this question, but we added, the, the cost to just bring it up to code was somewhere over a million dollars. But we would utilize all the other land sales to help accommodate the cost.
But you don't have an estimate of what you think that those sales will, will bring?
No, I, well, well, okay, so Oakwood property, probably 1.1, 1.2 million. I don't want to give a number.
Sure.
Maybe it's definitely a market to buy, I mean, that property now and with elections being over, we're going to go out to market in, in March for, for, well, subject to the council's approval of the appraisals.
Okay. Thank you.
Any, Mr. Mayor? So to clarify, sells, we've used the current funds we have set aside. What, what happens to the, the proceeds?
If we sell?
Yeah.
It would go back into the fund that we use to pay for it.
Yeah.
It would go right back into the general fund because that's where the land was purchased.
If it's sold before, I guess we're kind of, you know, replacing, but we would just apply it directly to it then if it's sold?
Yeah, if we sold it in March?
Yeah.
We would just not even take it out of the, we would not take any, it would just be offsetting the cost. But at the same time, we have to meet, it has to fit, fit within 5.2 million. Otherwise, they have to scale back the building and we, we have to bring that to this, this, we have to get it inside that budget. That's what a CMAR or construction manager at risk provides versus just doing a hard bid that you may get it, that, I, I think the building we did for the estimate for the Build's building was $16 million until we did CMAR and then it was 6.5. So there's a lot of savings in doing CMAR.
Do we, do we have, and I guess we probably structure it that way, that CD has a maturity where we can get to without a penalty, I guess?
Yep.
There's Bob.
You said Mr. Ford.
There he is. Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 7-0-0. Moving on to reports from staff. Mr. Cameron?
I feel like I've talked all night.
A little bit.
Trent, oh, to the, Stephanie, to our staff that get up and present, that don't do this very much that often, I want to commend you for your work. I love the fact of, of what we're doing and the work that you do, but I think it gets lost, the grants that we're working on and the work that we're trying to do and how hard you work. When I, what came to mind and why I put, it triggered, is Heinz Street is something, what Trent does, he'll come and say, "Mr. Cameron, would you just tell me what, what we need?" I said, "We need sidewalks down Heinz Street. We need to get from here to there." And he's just like, "Tell me what we need and I, and where I can go find it." And I just, I love the fact of how, just going after that and looking for it, working through this EPA grant with the water tower, navigating me through it, talking me off the ledge and making sure I get it right. I think sometimes it's just, again, I said this during a work session, it probably didn't get, you don't, you don't get it on all the public feed, but at the same time, I just appreciate the work that's done. The, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I know this, next week is, it's crazy because the weather's so, been so nice, doesn't seem like it's Thanksgiving. But tonight, I want to address a letter that went to the citizens. I wouldn't call it, I wouldn't say it was a letter. I think it was more of a direct print-off from whatever came from EPA or DNR. And it went to our citizens. And it's concerned a lot of people believing that they got lead in their water. And we, as a city, as the leader, we could have done a much better, I could have done a much better job of making sure there was a letter. There's no letter from the city or me associated with why it's coming out. But it's a rule that came down from EPA on October 8th. We believe we complied with it on October 16th, two days before the November 16th deadline to file. If we did not comply, we had to notify every resident if we were not compliant. They met the notification requirement with some pretty stiff requirements inside the language, talking about notaries, talking about affidavits. Mom, if you're watching, I pray you don't get that similar letter because it is something that I, when you look at it, it's pretty scary. Staff believe they were trying to comply with the statute, which they did comply. I mean, so the notification went out, it's just there's no explanation to it. So we are waiting for a message from DNR because we, actually what I can safely report from a lead perspective in the city, our system is 0% lead-free in the city's entire system. And the majority, what we believe, the staff that have been here for so long actually can attest and signed an affidavit on behalf of the city for up to, there was a certain portion of them, but there was about 300 or 400, they're like, "We're just not sure." And because they couldn't say they were sure, they can't write "known." So instead of just, what I would say, eh, sure, we'll mark it off because I think it is. They have to mark one, mark one, the letter goes to everybody. Now DNR communication back to us is suggesting, no, I think you do need it. Regardless, there is a letter going to come out from my office basically saying, "Sorry for the public scare. Your water does not, from what I can tell, from all the testing we've done over years from the lead and copper rule, which has been around for a long time, this law dropped because of Flint, Michigan." If you ever read that story, basically, this is a correction to that issue. If you have any questions, we are going to create a website, we're going to create a phone number for someone you can actually talk to if you have questions about it. But technically, we believe from that perspective, I can give you the test results from the whole city, are less than one part per million of lead in our own random samples that we're required to do. We did that over a year. The highest point we ever got at one particular residential area was four parts per million and the limit is 10. So that'll tell you just how our, our drinking water, public water system is safe, but at the same time, having people walk in today, I can understand the concern, thinking, do I have a problem? Is there lead in my water? Because lead has always been such a big deal. Naturally, it's going to create quite a bit of a stir. And the number one thing I heard is it just wasn't communicated well. And I would agree, and that starts and begins and ends with me. So we will work on that and I just appreciate the understanding, but we'll get a letter out. I've asked for one to go out at least. I'm waiting for DNR's final, because it's been literally every day on the phone and emails up until this point, trying to figure out whether we met the requirement, there was different conversations. It doesn't matter how we got there, we still could have communicated it better in the letter. So, we will do a follow-up, we'll do a post, you'll get a copy. We will do some sort of media release, just to put it out there, so people can see it as many different platforms. Please don't worry, but there are a lot of people in the United States and around us that also got similar notifications regarding the same thing, because this is a nationwide address they're trying to take care of. But again, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions regarding that, or my staff can, who we will send out a follow-up letter. The election sign-ups begin on December 10th and end on December 31st. So, again, the charter amendments allowed for us not to have where you would have one year in between elections, so we have staggered elections now, which require us to have, those that ran for one year will be, would sign up and run again, so that is, they'll sign up again December 10th and 12/31. Also, there's a stakeholder meeting for MM Highway. If you would like to, we're inviting a number of people on December 5th at the Build's building at 9:00 in the morning. We're going to be talking about the status of MM from I-44 to James River, because that is the subject of the Springfield Chamber of Commerce and the OTO, plus our own, one of our own legislative priorities, is to receive the additional $6 to $10 million that's required for improving the state highway. So, if you have any questions regarding that. AT&amp;T, I believe, what I understand, has launched nine different fiber crews, which was once not putting fiber, has now turned into a full-fledged fiber deployment in the city. What's interesting about that is the way the broadband laws have been structured, there could be two other companies that could come in and apply and do the exact same thing. So, but that's what all the digging and cutting, the one question that I'm going to make sure that we get clarified is when I was coming down, Miller, is just making sure all the road closure notifications are going out as well, because it's like, seeing that and like, oh, wait a minute, roads closed, it doesn't necessarily mean it comes across my inbox. The same time is, it's like, making sure, I think Tim does this now, requires them to put a notification, but I just don't know if we're doing that. So, I want to follow up with that. I want to shout out, there's something, we had a meeting this week with the Harmony House, and it's, at first, it was like, just get an update of what's going on, but it's very interesting that this council has provided a space, this, our police department has provided a space for another, I guess you'd call it, I don't want, a satellite office inside this facility, where people, domestic violence, people can come, victims can come to a space here to speak to someone that's from the Harmony House, and to hear the total numbers of what's going on and the work that they're doing for, and it's not, you won't find this in every region. I just want to give a, just a kind of a special shout-out for what they do and the work that they're doing, but also to our own community for doing something the other communities are trying to emulate, and are trying to set up ones in other cities based upon, not necessarily that we have so much volume here, but that it's, this program is working, because people know who the advocate is, and they actually come to this specific location to speak with that advocate. But it's pretty staggering to hear the statistics that are going on throughout our region and our area of what domestic violence is, and why that I even mention it, is because it does have an impact on all of us. It has an impact on the cost of what we do, and it has an impact on business, but it's just your employments and just where people can find advocacy and support. I want to thank our staff for being so accommodating, our PD staff for so accommodating for this space, but what it's actually doing, to hear the numbers and the people that it's impacting, the meals, the backpacks, to be a part of that, to help in some way to create that space, just that one little space, I know that is a big support to them, and I just appreciate their leadership in what they're doing. And then, the end-of-the-year meeting is on December 13th, if the mayor and council would like to join us. And with that, I'll answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
What time is the end-of-the-year meeting? Noon?
Thanks, Laura.
At Build's? At Spring Hill.
Yeah, we can't fit it in Build's.
Sorry. Good question. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Moving on to reports from council, Mr. Neal?
I had a question for Mr. Cameron from me, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
The letter the citizens got, going back to that, right now, they don't need to do anything.
That's correct.
There is no penalty if they don't send that form back?
Yeah, I would encourage, yes, my encouragement, the letter will say, "I encourage everyone just to allow us to write a response," but we'll get that, but yes, no one's coming out. Yeah, in the meantime, and until I do that, I don't even want to put a social media post. I want it to be one mass, here's what it is. We're not, what I can safely say is, we're not coming to spot dig your yard. The city's not going to shut off the water. We have no concerns with the, it's just, I don't want them to say they know 100% unless DNR says that that qualifies, the saying it qualifies. And they're going to give a sentence, some sort of submission, but yes, we're not going to wait for two weeks before we send out an answer. We're just going to say, "Listen, please just disregard." However, I'll say this one piece to that. It doesn't mean in a year, they don't get a similar letter, because this came down from the federal government, distributed through DNR. I can't promise they don't write a rule saying something like, "City, we're asking you to do this." Right now, they're just saying, "We'd like for you to give us the inventory." So, yeah, I don't, the answer is, they do not have to do anything right now whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is everything additional, Mr. Neal?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Any other reports from council? Looking to my left and looking to my right, I guess the last one on the list is the mayor. Just thank everyone for tonight. As a reminder, this Thursday is the OTO Board. It's live on Facebook. The agenda's online, so you can look at that, or if you want to come to the meeting, it's Thursday. Have a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving. I know it's going to be a break. Probably won't see a lot of you until after, so, hope you have a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving. And also, I think, not sure if we'll get a meeting before Christmas on Main or not, so if you get to be a part of that parade in Christmas on Main, there's a lot of good stuff going on Main Street. Miracle Week is our first week of December, so if you guys see me on TV, please wave to me, because I'll wave back to you, and I've got a sign, too, that says I'm waving. This room right here, I've been in this room with a lot of different things. I've been in here in court, and it has a separate feeling from when it does in council, and we have a bunch of people in here for rezon. It has a different feeling. And last Friday, it had a completely different feeling. It was completely full of fourth and sixth graders, and we had a blast. And I appreciate Detective Rogers being here for the jail tour, because that was one of the most popular things, besides the gavel. The gavel and the jail tour, like, sold the day. So, yeah, completely different. I even had to, you two had to speak to fourth and sixth graders. I don't have kids, and so, everything's a new experience for me, and yeah, that honestly gave me a lot of points on talking to my constituency, so I'm very thankful for that. Other than that, AT&amp;T Fiber, yeah, I'm going to be easier to get ahold of here soon, because I don't have to wait for access on my Wi-Fi. So, hopefully, I get that pretty soon. I'm thankful for that. Other than that, I would like to thank the police department and the fire department and the Green County Sheriff's Department for coming to the senior center last week and speaking to veterans. From all of that feedback, that was very much appreciated, and so, I really appreciate them coming down there, spending the time with seniors, and the appreciation for veterans. It was kind of two-bird day, so I really appreciate that, and it was a lot of great feedback. Other than that, that's where I'm going to cut my comments short. Tonight, we do have executive session. No further action, other than announcing adjournment by the mayor, shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda, unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.02. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under 610.02.1, pending and/or potential litigation. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fields?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Gruke?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Motion carries...